I'll go ahead and call this April 5th, 2021, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. We are meeting remotely via WebEx this evening. So thanks very much for taking the time to figure that out. There is the NCAA championship game this evening. Some of us are hoping to watch it at the end. So please don't, don't tell us how the game's going because we would like to watch it after we're done with our regular business tonight. With that said, thanks again for participating this evening. And we're going to go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance. And I'll ask Counselor Fury to please lead us this evening.
I can do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much, Andy. We'll move on to item three of our agenda. We have two items, the first being item 3A, which is a mayoral proclamation acknowledging Earth Day 2021. And I will read that proclamation of the city of Whitefish, Montana now. Whereas April 22nd, 2021 is the 51st anniversary of the original Earth Day, an event which has grown into an international celebration of major significance. And whereas a healthy environment with all its natural resources is a good source of great pride and value for the treasure state of Montana and the city of Whitefish. And whereas the preamble to our state's constitution reads, and I quote, "We, the people of Montana, grateful to God for the quiet beauty of our state, the grandeur of our mountains, the vastness of our rolling plains, and desiring to improve the quality of life, the quality of opportunity, and to secure the blessings of liberty for this and future generations, do ordain and establish this constitution." And whereas in 2016, the Whitefish City Council passed a resolution to forever protect and conserve the Haskell Basin watershed. And whereas in 2017, Mayor John Molfeld issued a proclamation committing the city of Whitefish to do its part to implement U.S. climate goals established through the Paris Climate Accord. And whereas in 2018, the city of Whitefish adopted a climate action plan and established a climate action plan standing committee to implement the actions identified in the plan, demonstrating its deep concern and ongoing commitment to environmental quality and the health of its citizens. And whereas the city of Whitefish is a leader and partner in the pursuit of environmental quality and public health. And whereas the protection and improvement of environmental quality and public health is critical to sustaining a thriving, healthy community and economy and to improve the quality of life for all in our town. And now therefore, I, John Molfeld, mayor of Whitefish, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 22nd, 2121 as Earth Day throughout Whitefish. And I encourage all citizens, businesses, and institutions to participate in programs and activities that protect our environment and contribute to a healthy, sustainable planet and future. And I will pass and adopt this resolution today on the fifth day of April 2021. Thank you very much for listening this evening. And we will turn it over to Dylan Boyle for item 3B of our agenda, which is our annual review and consideration of approval for the Whitefish Convention and Visitors Bureau Marketing Plan and Budget for Fiscal Year 2022. Dylan, welcome this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor Molfeld. Bear with me for just a second while I pull up my presentation here. Just want to make sure that I have the correct screen up. And someone give me a confirmation. They, they see an FY22 marketing plan, April 5th, full screen presentation in front of them.
You are getting two thumbs up from Michelle. I think you're good to go.
Okay, great. That's always the, the, the hard part. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Molfeld, City Council, and city staff. I want to first thank you all very much for your time. It's nice to see everyone tonight. I am here to present some information on the activities of the Whitefish Convention and Visitors Bureau, also known as Explore Whitefish, and to request that the city council approve the FY22 marketing plan as well as the public bed tax portion of the budget. And for your reference, this information can be found in your packet on pages 26 to 69. State law does require that this approval happens in order, in order for the WCBB to receive annual funds from the lodging facility use tax, which is also commonly known as the bed tax. And as you can see, I do have a slideshow presentation, which I'll begin here shortly. And I'll be utilizing that as a visual aid to talk through some of the various areas of activities that we currently engage in. And we provide vital community and economic development services to Whitefish. And these services, I feel, are even more important than ever as we look forward to the future. For over a year now, our community and our organization have been experiencing unprecedented impacts as a result of COVID-19. During this presentation, I'll speak to the current economic situation as well as how we are projecting our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. However, before I begin, I'd like to introduce the members of the Board of Directors. I am extremely fortunate to have such an engaged and passionate group of which to serve at the pleasure of. Zach Anderson is the Chair of our Board from Abruzzo Italian Kitchen, representing restaurant and bar. Erica Terrell, our Vice Chair from Glacier Restaurant Group. Rhonda Fitzgerald is our Secretary and Treasurer from the Garden Wall Inn. Nick Columbus represents Whitefish Mountain Resort. Mariah Joss from Nelson's Hardware is our retail representative. Edna White, representing Large Lodging and Avril Hospitality. Luke Walrath from the Alpine Theater Project. Jesse Farns from Montana Coffee Traders. And Jenny Claudier from the Big Mountain Commercial Association. And she is our transportation representative. We are also fortunate to work with two excellent agencies. LJ Communications, which is based here in Whitefish and is comprised of Lisa Jones, Ella Kobelt, and Brian Schott. They are our contracted public relations agency. DVA Advertising, which is based in Bend, Oregon, is our contracted creative agency. We also have three staff members, including myself. But there's also Dan Hanson, who is our Marketing and Sales Manager, and our Office Manager, Sarah Stewart. And once again, I'm very fortunate to have this extremely talented and experienced group of both staff and contracted agencies. The purpose of our annual marketing plan is to sustainably grow the economy of Whitefish by emphasizing its desirability as a premier year-round travel destination to non-resident visitors who appreciate and respect the character of the place. We recognize the strain that increasing summer visitation places upon our town. And as such, we support business strategies that emphasize economic and social benefits to our community while maintaining the integrity of place and the quality of life for our local residents. And this certainly includes the WCBB's partnership with the city of Whitefish, which includes the crisis communication partnership as well as our core commitment to the Whitefish Sustainable Tourism Management Plan, which was approved by city council last fall. Over the past year, our Board of Directors, staff, and agencies have worked harder than ever to adapt to the new world of travel and tourism, to understand the current effects of the pandemic, as well as to build strategies to anticipate the future of travel to Whitefish, which balance the critical economic viability of tourism to our town with community and economic and environmental and social benefits for us. And as many of you have been through my annual presentation before, I'm really going to highlight a lot of those new and enhanced strategies that, that we are going to be working on and have been identified in our FY22 marketing plan this evening. In light of the Whitefish Sustainable Tourism Management Plan, we have also introduced, for the first time in the FY22 marketing plan, destination stewardship goals, which are focused on the STMP plan and the integration of that into the Whitefish brand. I'd like to share those with you now. The idea behind these destination stewardship goals are really to focus on that implementation of the STMP plan and, as I mentioned, that integration with our brand. In particular, that includes co-leading the implementation of the plan in conjunction with the STMP committee as well as the city of Whitefish. We are also going to be taking the lead on the outreach segments of the plan with the goal of building awareness and influencing visitor behavior with particular focus on the peak summer season. Currently, we are working with renowned brand strategist Mike Bento, who is based out of Washington, DC, and who was the creator of the original Montana brand back in the late 2000s, as well as has also worked with us to identify our seasonal activities of which we currently promote. We're working with him right now to develop messaging specific to those elements of the STMP to integrate those into our brand. We are also going to be working to collaborate with Glacier National Park, as well as our regional and state tourism partners for communicating with visitors during our peak season. And I'll talk a little bit about that more later. Another element of our marketing plan goals for destination stewardship is to encourage alternative modes of transportation, such as bicycle and pedestrian paths and expansion of public transit. This year, actually starting in FY21, for our Explore Whitefish Grant Program, we have given preference to grant projects which help to support the key pillars of the STMP plan, which are community character, livability, and committee engagement. And the deadline for applications for that was April 1st for, for this year's cycle with that. And so after those grants are awarded this year, this program has been available now for three years. We will have provided over $20,000 for local projects. So it's something that we're very excited to be able to continue that grant program and truly focus on those key pillars. From the PR perspective, we are working to pitch media coverage, including topics such as recreating responsibly, leaving no trace, traveling safely around wildlife, and wildfire mitigation. And lastly, we are taking the lead on outreach segments to build awareness, as I mentioned, and influence that visitor behavior with that particular focus of the summer season. And with that, we're calling this the Peak Season On The Ground Visitor Education Campaign. And it's firmly rooted in the value statement that was developed during the creation of the COVID-safety-focused Be A Friend Of The Fish campaign, which I know many of you have seen, that was on the ground here during early winter and was informed by the STMP plan. And while our campaign is currently being developed and will be launched as part of our, for our peak season for the summer, I would like to share with you the components of the value statement which make up this campaign. First is fueling up our local businesses. Our merchants, restaurants, and hotels rely on your support. Recreate responsibly, be prepared for anything, and have a backup plan. Wait for fall, winter, or spring to visit. Experience natural beauty with less crowds. And you will notice some of these photos. We've actually incorporated some of those into active pages on explorewhitefish.com. And others will be active and ready for the spring season. So this is one for our Recreate Responsibly page, which also can be found at wanderlightlywhitefish.com, which includes a video of our hometown hero and Olympian Maggie Boyson talking about recreating responsibly. Of course, helping us stay healthy has been extremely important throughout our Whitefish COVID Cares messaging and making sure our visitors are aware to observe our local health guidelines. Showing respect and kindness. Ignite inclusive conversations and show mutual respect for locals and visitors. Take it slow, enjoy the ride. This is really talking about slowing down and taking it slow. Enjoy, notice the beauty, and watch fish and all that surrounds us. Walk, ride, or hop on the snow bus before you drive. And lastly, be a steward of our public land by protecting public lands, respecting private lands, and always giving wildlife the right way. Recycle and be responsible for your waste. This includes TP as well. And leave no trace. Share your photos responsibly. Preserve the landscape rather than piling up lakes. This peak season on-the-ground campaign, as I mentioned, will be available. And we will be happy to provide an update before that does go live later this spring, before summer begins. As we continue to integrate the findings of the STMP plan into our destination stewardship work, we also continue to work toward our goal of driving visitation to Whitefish during the shoulder seasons of fall, winter, and spring. As you know, we enter into paid advertising in our core geographic target markets, which are outlined in the plan. This has come to look different in the past year as we have now shifted quite a bit of our paid advertising over to almost entirely online and digital advertising. And while this strategy may have shifted, we still utilize the Whitefish brand pillars in unison to promote exactly what Whitefish is. A vibrant and charming small town that provides breathtaking experiences by day, relaxing hospitality by night, and serves as a gateway to spectacular unspoiled nature. And I just want to show you some quick examples from our Secret Seasons Spring campaign, which includes our media partnership with Peloton Magazine, featuring cycling in and around Whitefish, as well as on the Going to the Sun Road. Here are some of our current Facebook paid ads, which go to some content-forward, kind of blog-style information that's on our website, explorewhitefish.com. We spend approximately 60% of our advertising budget promoting winter and 20% each on fall and spring. We continue to put our efforts into driving visitation to Whitefish during the shoulder seasons to ensure that we continue to have a year-round vibrant town and community and not looking to increase capacity during the already busy summer months. We do believe that winter does remain our strongest season to attract people. But we also see the growing opportunity in our fall and our spring as well. We also like the ability to extend our winter advertising, which we'll continue to do next year into late February, as well as into March, as an opportunity for really building that spring ski season business. In terms of our paid media placement, something for us this year, we really are utilizing what we call our own digital channels. So that's Facebook and Instagram and YouTube. They really have continued to become our, our workhorse for our seasonal content-forward approach. And for us, it's really been yielding some excellent engagement on the website, as well as through our social media channels. Our media partnerships and our streaming, which we've identified as a breakout of our online and digital campaign strategy here, really do help to provide us with ultimate flexibility, as well as we can be highly targeted. So the way that this is broken down here is basically that 50% for digital are those owned channels that I mentioned. Media partnerships, like the Peloton Magazine example that I provided, and I'll show you a little bit more, is going to make up about 30% of our advertising placement. And 20% is going to be streaming, whether that's audio such as Spotify or video streaming as well. And again, it's really allowing us to be really highly targeted, which is definitely really helpful for us in terms of really honing in on that geo-traveler. We are continuing to leverage our advertising dollars with cooperative marketing opportunities that are presented by the State Tourism Office. And we are actively participating in opportunities with our regional partners, such as Whitefish Mountain Resort. And here are some examples of some media partnerships that we have worked on in cooperation with Whitefish Mountain Resort in the last few years. Some of these, as I mentioned, Peloton Magazine, Pink Bike, and Free Hub, which are mountain bike publications, as well as websites. We just wrapped up a shoot last month with Teton Gravity Research, which will come out next winter. And we've also worked with Booty Mountain Culture, as well as Ski Journal. Our public relations program moving forward has been incredibly effective. Because we have an experienced and talented PR team, we have also been able to craft and effectively implement timely and thoughtful crisis communication strategies in partnership with the city, including the Be A Friend Of The Fish campaign. The PR team also works directly with media and digital influencers, as well as other targeted promotions to bring a very desirable return on investment. And right now, based on the current pandemic and recent adoption of the STMP plan, the PR team is focused on earned media placement in the outlined target audiences, incorporating our brand pillars, while also messaging to those emerging themes that I mentioned about sustainable visitation and COVID-safe visitation. Just a few examples that you can find on our website of this. Some COVID Care Flight inerraries, which the PR team is utilizing for media, as well as that we have out there on our website as well. Really talk about and make sure that we're getting out that safety-first, adventure-second messaging for those that are traveling to Whitefish. Some other initiatives that the PR team is working on is helping, is going to be helping me to build out our Recreate Responsibly messaging through wanderlightlywhitefish.com. The value statement, which I shared as well. We will be developing some Be A Friend Of The Fish business support and collateral and training guides as well, moving forward. So the PR team, really, even though we aren't hosting any media right now, has really been busy on that community engagement, really making sure that we are staying safe and recreating responsibly as well. So I really appreciate all the work that they've done and the partnership with the city, especially during these times over the last year, has just been incredibly valuable and productive as well. In addition to our advertising and public relations, we do publish the official Whitefish Travel Guide and the brand-new 2021 Travel Guide has just come out, as well as our Green Whitefish Townmarks. And this year, we printed 20,000 travel guides. And we are on pace to print and distribute between 50,000 and 75,000 of the Green Whitefish Townmarks. Both pieces are distributed through various channels, as outlined in the marketing plan. This includes the five freestanding kiosks that are located in and around downtown Whitefish, as well as the two that are located in the parking structure at City Hall. Those freestanding kiosks, if you remember, are retrofitted with Wi-Fi hotspots, which is in partnership with Public Works. And that's an amenity that's available, obviously, to both our residents and our visitors to Whitefish. And we also partner with the Whitefish Chamber of Commerce to provide financial assistance, collateral, and updated visitor information for the walk-in visitor center located on Second and Central. Our primary call to action in all of our paid placement is to visit our website, explorewhitefish.com. And here we have a web header image, which is seasonal. And it does integrate as well with our campaigns. In past years, those orange buttons that you will notice there on the header image would go back to up your day and how to travel to Whitefish. But in the last year, those have changed a bit. We have Travel Safely now, as is our tag in there. And that does currently direct to health and safety guidelines at whitefishcovidcares.com. At the bottom of the homepage, we do have a rotator of content pages. Here you'll find our latest, latest media partnerships, like Peloton Magazine, and our safety and recreate responsibly messaging, as well as our brand-new FAQ page for the recently announced Going to the Sun Road ticketed entry system for this upcoming summer in Glacier National Park. And speaking of working to understand the potential impacts and current impacts of visitation during this unprecedented year and a half, I'd like to share with you some brand-new research. Unfortunately, some of our 2020 research was delayed and being reported. So I'm now sharing that with you for the first time here, as I just received it. And I do plan to include this research in the final narrative for the FY22 marketing plan. So first, I want to talk about lodging occupancy. I have recently been able to work on a joint venture partnership with the state of Montana to receive monthly lodging occupancy for short-term rentals in addition to our standard lodging occupancy report, which I do share out on a monthly basis. And what I was able to do is to give you an idea of what the lodging occupancy for the short-term rentals have been and look at that in comparison to our standard lodging. So I do want to just mention that the standard lodging is a sample of about 400 or so rooms within the city limits of Whitefish. And then I do have two samples of the short-term rental lodging occupancy. So that would be those within the city limits, as well as those within the zip code. That zip code line does include the ones that are in the city. It's just the overall number here. So what I did is just to give you guys an idea. I looked at 2019 and 2020, just to get a little bit of a trend to show you what's happening kind of on the lodging front here. So here's the trend line for all of the months in 2019. The blue line is our standard lodging, brick-and-mortar sample of lodging. The red is the short-term rentals within the city limits. And the yellow is the short-term rentals in the zip code. So as you can see here, you know, the trend, the trend lines are similar. But as you can see, in terms of lodging occupancy overall, our standard lodging properties performed, had a higher lodging occupancy for almost all of 2019. So kind of, you know, interesting numbers there. And, and certainly good numbers considering, you know, in terms of especially those short-term rentals that are just in the zip code. Those are not properties that we receive a portion of the bed tax for or that we obviously would receive any resort tax for. Here's a look at the same lodging occupancy, but this is for 2020. So here, you'll see there was a bit, while the, the trend line is similar, you'll see that the biggest difference there is obviously in April, where we saw big spikes in the short-term rental occupancy there. And then the other thing I thought was pretty interesting here is you'll see the biggest spike in terms of occupancy during the summer for the short-term rentals was in July, where the highest point for our lodging occupancy was actually in September. But again, if you kind of take out that April piece in there, still a similar, you know, seasonal trend line and some, you know, roughly similar occupancy numbers as well. Moving forward into 2021, this graph is going to look a little different just because it only had two months of data in here. But you'll notice that the lodging for our standard lodging properties and the short-term rentals in town, those lodging occupancies are pretty similar for the first two months. And the short-term rentals within the zip code do have a higher occupancy rate, but still aren't hitting, you know, 60% there in February. So just to give you an idea of kind of a trend there of what we're seeing. Kind of moving into some Whitefish visitor spending. I did just receive the final year 2020 visitor spending sample. And this is a sample of credit card spending that happens in Whitefish. And this is for anyone that does not live within the zip code, our zip code. So this could also include Montana residents coming and spending money here as well. So just to give you a little idea on the data with that. So in 2019, what we saw is those that were not Whitefish residents spent about, this is a sample, remember, this is just, you know, kind of a sample of credit card spending, spent over $71 million in Whitefish, with about 90% of that coming from domestic and about 11%, 11% or so coming from international. Now, as you can see, there is a difference in when we look toward 2020. For obvious reasons, our international spending really shrunk with the Canadian border still being closed to non-essential travel. But the overall number did go up to roughly 74 million. So while we did see a shrink in the international spending significantly, we did see that domestic spending did increase as well. So just to kind of give you all an impact, and that comes from Visa View Travel. And I share that because we are, you know, continually trying to monitor what's going on in the ground and finding those new research opportunities to really give us that quantifiable data to help us make decisions and to really understand our visitation patterns. Moving forward into our budget, we do begin our budgeting process for the upcoming fiscal year, actually in early January is when we kind of start looking at projections. And then we do have initial approval by the board of directors in March before coming to you all. During the end of this budgeting process back in FY21, the impacts of COVID-19 forced us to begin to really reevaluate our budgets and to look at things differently. And as the effects of the pandemic on travel and tourism will no doubt continue into FY22, we are taking a similar approach. When projecting our annual budget, we take into consideration historical trends from many sources. That includes the resort tax, our Whitefish lodging tax collection reports, our tourism promotion assessment collections. We do receive preliminary revenue projections from the Montana Department of Commerce, which is helpful for us, as well as we look at state and national travel trends from sources such as the Institute for Tourism and Recreation Research, which is at the University of Montana, the U.S. Travel Association, as well as destination analysts looking at some larger nationwide trends as well. Our predictions, or projections rather, you know, they can be fluid in nature due to the difficulty of the current situation. However, we feel as though we do have a pretty good sense, just based upon all of those other different historical trends, that we feel that we've come up with a workable number here. However, we do monitor our collections closely and we may need to adjust those projections. But I do just want to go through these, just to give you a context kind of of where we were last year compared to where we are now. So back at the very beginning of FY21, we had a budget that we were going to come to council with back then, about a year ago, at 120, 156,000. And as we began to see the effects of the pandemic, we came to you all and actually with a 50% of that original projection, which was 78,000. Thankfully, collections have been better than anticipated for FY21. So now our budget, the current workable bed tax budget is actually about 75% of that original projection that we had back in January, February, early March of 2020. And to give you an idea for FY22 for our public budget, we're projecting 126,905. And again, just, just for context, that's about a 20%, 20% decrease of what the initial FY21 budget projection was. And it's about 15% of the original FY20 projection from two years ago. So really for us, you know, and you know, you're looking at kind of where we are currently in our, in our public budget of FY21. You know, that's actually 10% increase over what we currently are seeing. So while we do not believe that we're going to be back into those, you know, 2019 collection numbers yet, we are still feeling cautiously optimistic that we are going to have solid collections upcoming for FY22. So I just wanted to give you that as some, some context. I think it's also important to note here, just a quick idea, you know, the vast majority of our public budget does go to our consumer advertising. And for us, it's also really important to show you that our, our private budget, and I do have the overall percentages for each budget line item, because our private budget does account for about 80% of the total budget for us. This comes from membership dues and the tourism promotion assessment collections. I think, I think it's really important to show you all this so you have an idea of the full scope of services that we as an organization provides our, our community. And with that, I want to thank you all very much for your time this evening. And once again, I'm here to request that the city council approve the WCBB FY22 marketing plan and public lodging tax budget of 126,905. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Once again, thanks for your time.
Thanks Dylan, as usual, very comprehensive and very much appreciate the thorough report to the city council, and I encourage everyone to read the full budget document that's included in the packet and marketing plan for this coming year. I'll entertain a motion first, and then we can ask some questions before we take roll call. There are motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we adopt the marketing plan and the bed tax budget from the WCBB. Is that good enough?
Yeah, just referencing the, the public portion of the budget and the amount of 126,905, I believe. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Any questions for Dylan from the council?
I just had a quick one. Was there, has there been any noticeable or verifiable dip in tourism revenue or tourist numbers since we enacted our mask ordinance?
You know, I don't, I don't have anything quantifiable, Counselor Cornell. I, I will tell you that, you know, that is something that we have continued to put out there, you know, in, in, in our messaging and visitors are still coming to Whitefish. And, and thankfully, our businesses have been able to, to, to stay open. And, you know, while, while we're not at those 2019, 2020 levels of visitation and expenditures, you know, all things considered, we, we are, you know, doing well. Our businesses definitely do need that shoulder season business. And, and it's not, I, I can tell you too, that, you know, those expenditures aren't uniform across businesses. And some of our businesses are certainly, you know, still needing that, that visitor revenue. But, you know, all of our, our indications are, you know, that, you know, all things considered, you know, we're, we're faring a lot better than a lot of other destinations and communities that are similar to us in, in other states. And, and I, I want to thank the council for being really forward-thinking and being safety first, because I do think that it's allowed our businesses to stay open and to really garner that, that really important revenue to keep their businesses open. So that would be my answer. Thank you.
Thanks Dylan. Further questions from the council?
Just a quick follow-up if I, I could, John. Just what kind of comparisons did you do in terms of what, where we are versus other communities either in Montana or other similar communities in the U.S.?
Yeah, you know, and, and some of that honestly just comes from being on some national calls with other, with other destinations, you know. For, for us, really, when we, when we look at kind of where we are, particularly in Western and Northwest Montana, and talking to those other communities, you know, such as Bozeman and Big Sky and ourselves, you know, we've had more significant visitation than a lot of larger cities or other, or, or other areas, you know, in the, in, in the West that are still having, you know, even stricter restrictions than, than, than we have. So really, a lot of the smaller mountain communities, such as ourselves, have fared, at least in Montana, have definitely fared better than a lot of the national larger destinations.
Thanks Dylan.
Thanks Steve. Any further questions for Dylan? Dylan, I have one real briefly, if you don't mind. It's because we have to move on to our regular agenda. But the trends that you're seeing in the STRs, which are obviously a major concern of this council and the city in general, short-term rentals, that being the trends, are you, are you relating that to the increase in supply as a result of the county basically permitting STRs throughout the county with a simple notice to adjacent neighbors or similarly the proliferation of illegal STRs in the city of Whitefish? Or just simply because we're in a pandemic and people feel safer renting an STR versus staying in a traditional lodging facility?
Those are all great questions. You know, I think there's, there's, there's so many different variables that play into that overall picture. I will tell you, you know, just, just getting this data, and I haven't even really had a chance to really fully digest it. But just looking at what I'm seeing on those trends, I think a couple of things are, are going on. You know, yes, I do think that there is an element of, of pandemic of choice, of lodging choice potentially. But what I really think you, you know, we're seeing in there is, you know, the number of rooms, particularly when you're looking outside of the city's limits, you know, that's basically there's, in that data, there's anywhere from 250 to 300 in town. And then when you're talking about the, the, the county in 59937 as a whole, it's about 1,000. So that's 700. And if you just, you know, average even that by two bedrooms, which many of them are bigger, you know, that's already just going to double the lodging, the estimate that we have for lodging number of rooms in Whitefish, right? So, you know, you're spreading people out and you're also doubling the number of available beds. So I think that, that just for context, I think plays into that as well. But when you see that those occupancy levels are somewhat similar to what we're seeing, you know, also means that there are more folks here.
Absolutely. Thanks Dylan. Appreciate that. Rebecca says, thank you. By the way, she's unable to participate via audio, so I'm getting messages from her, but she wanted me to convey that along to you. With that said, Michelle, roll call please on the motion for approval.
Counselor Cornell?
In favor?
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor?
Counselor Davis?
In favor?
Counselor Fury?
In favor?
And Counselor Hannon is absent tonight, so Counselor Norton?
She votes in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Dylan, thanks very much, and please extend our appreciation to your entire board.
I will. Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
You as well.
We'll move on to our, back to our agenda, and we'll move on to item four, which is communications from the public. I'll go ahead and turn this section of the meeting over to Michelle. Any communications from the public this evening, tonight? Michelle, I will state that if you are here by chance to speak on behalf of items 10A or 10B of the agenda, 10A being North Valley Food Bank's request for a donation to support the remodel of the food bank, or the letter we received along with the petition from Neil Stubber and the City Beach Neighborhood requesting council to address traffic and safety issues. Now would be your opportunity to provide brief comment if you don't mind, and we can certainly acknowledge you later in the meeting if we have additional questions for you. Michelle?
Thank you. For those of you who are interested in speaking during this time, please raise your hand by hovering your mouse over your name in the participants list to the right side of the monitor. Click the hand icon and it'll raise your hand. You can also, if you're attending by phone, please hit star three on your phone pad. That will also raise your hand. Or the three dots to the left of the red X at the bottom of your screen, that also raises your hand. So I will address you, and you can unmute your mic and then please state your name and your address. Sarah? Canapa?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Sarah Canapa, and I live at 336 Kalispell Avenue in Whitefish. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before the mayor, the city council, and city staff. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a group of neighbors on Kalispell Avenue that would like to request that the council take action to change the zoning on the west side of Kalispell Avenue from WR4 to WR2 to maintain the residential character of our neighborhood. We are concerned that the WR4 zoning on the west side of the street, between Third Street East and Sixth Street East, allows density greater than the current character of the street. We would like the council to enact a growth policy amendment and a zoning change so that the zoning on the west side of Kalispell Avenue matches the east side of Kalispell Avenue and the rest of the historic neighborhood as WR2. We have gathered the signatures of 75% of the lot holders in the affected area in support of this zoning change and would like to submit these petitions to the council as a citizen request to take action on this matter. Thank you very much for your consideration of this issue. We look forward to working with the council to address our request.
Thanks Sarah.
Okay, Neil Stubber, you can unmute your mic and state your name and address for us, please.
Hey guys, Neil Stubber, 103 Dakota Avenue. My wife and I moved to City Beach in 2007, and traffic and safety has always been sort of a common discussion in the neighborhood. We don't have any children ourselves, but we do see a lot of kids riding bikes in the neighborhood, coming to and fro from the city beach itself, and also participating in play at the Seroptimus Park area. So we see a lot of influx in the summer. That's pretty obvious. With COVID making the in-person conversations harder, the petition that we put forward was simply a way to have this safety conversation remotely. I can't claim that this was my fly to fly, but I, you know, I simply volunteered to set up a petition. We passed it around via social, via email, and on slips of paper to neighbors' doorsteps. And the rest of our thoughts are collected and represented in the packet. So on that note, I'll drop the mic. Thanks, guys.
Thanks Neil. Appreciate that. Again, this will be addressed again at the end of the meeting. So thanks for your comments tonight.
Sophie Albert, you can unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sophie Albert. I'm the executive director at North Valley Food Bank, and I live at 32 Pheasant Run in Whitefish. I would like to thank you all for considering our request for a donation to the North Valley Food Bank and to our remodel. This was an idea because we received permit fees for $5,229 from the city, and this is a way to try to offset those permit fees. And we're currently seeing an increase in customers, not only because of the COVID-19 pandemic, but also because of the housing situation more recently, and because many of our customers just simply cannot find affordable housing within the city and just outside of the city of Whitefish anymore. We're supporting those customers not only by food, but also by providing exits to emergency vending assistance, to Neighborhood Works, which we just started today. And I would also mention that through the remodel, we're not only addressing that increase in customers, but we are also building a commercial kitchen to provide free local workforce training, specifically for youth at risk and for adults with disabilities. And yeah, so all in all, we support a healthy community and economic economy here in Whitefish, and thank you for considering our request tonight.
Thanks Sophie.
Hey, the next person, the phone number starts with 541 and ends with 24. So if you'd like to hit star three on your phone, that'll unmute your mic. Please state your name and address, please. Phone number 5411. And then it ends with 24. Would you like to speak? Maybe not. John Lacy, if you'd like to unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Thank you, council, and thank you to Sarah. My name is John Lacy. I live at 506 Kalispell Avenue with my wife and family. We are 23-year residents at that location. My wife and I signed the petition to which Sarah referred and brought to your attention here. We have seen a lot of changes in this portion of downtown and would like to preserve the historical nature and the traditional nature of Kalispell Avenue, in particular, this couple of blocks. It's not only been forecasted as an issue for the growth policy, but consistent with citizens' planning rights of survey. Overwhelming majority of the, the folks in the neighborhood have agreed. So thank you for considering the request and yes, thank you.
Thanks, John, very much. Anyone else, Michelle?
We do. It looks like we have a line. So Jenny Bevel, you'd like to unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
My name's Jenny Bevel. I live at 532 Kalispell Avenue, and I bought this house in 2016 and have been restoring it. And I'm also wanting to voice my support. And I'm also wanting to voice my support of what Sarah referenced about changing the zoning on Kalispel Avenue to maintain the residential character. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jenny.
Hey, Colette, if you'd like to unmute your mic, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Colette Bosale, and I'm a property owner of 534 Kalispel Avenue. I'm voicing my support to change the zoning on Kalispel Avenue to maintain the residential character of our neighborhood. The avenues remain as a charming historical marker of this town's early days and continue to provide residents and visitors alike with a sense of community imbued in the small-town feel of Whitefish. This aligns with the express goals of Mr. Boyle's SPMP plan, which is to protect and respect all that makes Whitefish a vibrant and charming community with strong visitor appeal. Thank you.
Thanks, Colette.
Thank you.
Okay, Virginia Cronk, you can go ahead and mute your mic, and you have the floor.
I'm Virginia Cronk. I live at 406 Kalispel Avenue, and I'm here with my neighbors to support the petition to return the zoning to keep it a residential area. Everybody has said all the right things. I would also like to emphasize the importance of historic neighborhoods in the tourist experience in Whitefish. If you would come and sit on my corner of Fourth and Kalispel, excuse me, in the summer, you would see how many people drive their motorhomes up and park them, or they get out of their cars, they walk the neighborhood, they take photos of the gardens, they take photos of the refurbished houses. It's really quite an attraction to them, so please don't lose sight of that part of it, as well as the fact that it's just a very lovely neighborhood to live in. Thank you.
Thanks, Virginia.
Okay, and the name on this one is the actual password to the meeting, 5 April. So if you'd like to unmute your mic, you have the floor. Please state your name and address.
My name is Thomas Brown. Sorry about the password. My residence is 539 Kalispel Avenue, and I purchased this house, this property, in 1992, so I've been here for quite a while, and I've seen the growing amount of traffic on the street, especially in the last couple of years. So I support the proposal to, for the rezoning of this street to preserve the nature of my neighborhood. Thank you.
Seeing anyone else, Michelle?
Yep. Rhonda Fitzgerald.
Hi, Rhonda Fitzgerald, 412 Lubfer Avenue, not Kalispel Avenue. But I would just like to point out, as was mentioned, that the growth policy identifies this problem under zoning, the issue, page 50 of the growth policy. The current zoning is often inconsistent with the existing character and densities of residential neighborhoods. When the zoning district applied to a neighborhood allows higher densities and different residential types than those that exist in the neighborhood, the most likely result is that new development and redevelopment will not reflect the character and qualities of the host neighborhood. That was identified in 2007 as a problem, and this particular neighborhood is called out, as is mine on Lubfer Avenue. And then further in the document, under the Future Land Use Recommended Actions, which is on page 71, the first recommended action for future land use is, "In order to protect and preserve the character, scale, and qualities of existing neighborhoods, the city of Whitefish shall revise the zoning jurisdiction regulations and adopt character-based standards and neighborhood conservation districts for new development, redevelopment, and infill." So this is something that the city, in fact, was charged with accomplishing 15 years ago, 14 years ago. And I think the neighborhood had to take this into their own hands and circulate a petition, but it was really up to the city to actually execute on this. So I hope that you will receive their petition and request in the, in the spirit in which it is given, and help them to achieve the result that, as a city, has been directed since 2007. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
And Richard Hilton, or you can unmute your mic, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Michelle. Mayor and council, I don't live on Kalispel Avenue, obviously, 104 Fifth Street is my address. I just wanted to chime in in support of the folks on Kalispel Avenue, those residents and their initiative to downzone their specific properties from WR2 to WR2. I think as Rhonda pointed out, it's consistent with city growth policy and future land use goals, and so I encourage you to move forward on this neighborhood request. In so doing, I also am aware that they, there may be some fees imposed on these folks, and I wish that you would take that under consideration. They're all taxpayers. They've been paying taxes for a long period of time. And then to dampen their ability to petition their government with a substantial cost of doing so would be unfair. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, deputy. Farmer?
A couple more. Molly Brown, you can unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello, this is Molly Brown, and my address is 344 Kalispel Avenue, and I've been working alongside Sarah Canapa and Mary Drew Powers to get the zoning changed on Kalispel Avenue. I am completely in support of this, so we can keep our neighborhood as it is. And I appreciate all of you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
And Mary Drew Powers, you can unmute your mic, you have the floor. Mary Drew, can you unmute your mic?
I'm Mary Drew Powers. I live at 327 Kalispel Avenue, and I also support a zoning change along the street, along with the growth policy amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
And then, John, you have three emails that did come through regarding the same thing on Kalispel Avenue. Gail Muntzky, who lives at 518 Kalispel Avenue, supports it. John Berger, who lives at 328 Kalispel, supports it. And Molly Brown, who did speak, so she did send in a letter just in case she wasn't able to get on. So other than that, it does not look like we have any other, who want to join in and speak towards the council.
Okay, I normally don't respond to public comment, but since we had overwhelming support for the Kalispel rezoning petition, I just wanted to thank the neighbors that banded together and took the effort to hopefully, in short order, present that petition to the city council for a formal zone change. Many people in town don't realize this, but you know, we're often conflicted as a council because we have uses that certainly aren't consistent with traditional neighborhoods throughout town, as Rhonda and Richard eloquently pointed out. But as a government, our hands are tied because we can't legally downzone properties without the consent of the residences, which you've certainly proven here. So I hope the word gets out that this needs to be citizen-initiated, as you have done, because as Rhonda pointed out, again, there are other neighborhoods in town that I would love to see this same petition brought forward to help protect those residential and traditional neighborhoods throughout town. So thank you very much to the residents that participated in the petition drive, and we will certainly look forward to seeing that at a future council meeting. With that said, we do have communications from volunteer boards. Are there any folks participating tonight from the public who would like to provide a volunteer board report? Not seeing any. How about the council? Any volunteer board reports from the city council? Not seeing any volunteer board reports from the council. We'll move on to item six, which is our consent agenda. You have the minutes from the March 15, 2021 regular session. I did check with Rebecca, and she does not have any suggested changes to the minutes, if I'm not mistaken, so I would entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
That was seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Dave Taylor, just a question for you from Rebecca. She was just curious about the Lake Shore permit application that is under the consent agenda, and whether or not we notify adjacent neighbors when an application is submitted. And she references folks like Charlie Abel.
Yeah, we typically don't have a notification requirement in the Lake Shore regulations to notify adjacent property owners. That's not part of the Lake Shore regulations. However, the Lake Shore Committee has been talking about, at least in cases where people are doing major permits, that at least the adjacent neighbors would be notified. So we're going to be bringing some Lake Shore changes with regard to riprap, and we're considering, you know, working with the committee to add some notification requirements, but currently it's not a requirement, and we've never done that before, so.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Hopefully Rebecca was able to hear that. With that said, Michelle, roll call please on approval of the consent agenda.
Counselor Canapa?
In favor.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
And she's in favor as well, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks, Michelle, for managing that portion of the meeting. Much appreciated. And we'll move on to item seven. We do have two public hearings scheduled for this evening, the first being item 7A of the agenda, which is consideration of a request from Matthew and Judy Lanning for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment located at 19 Washington Avenue. The property is zone WR2, which is our two-family residential district, and this is W C U P 21-04. Staff?
All right. Good evening. So again, this is a request for accessory apartment, CUP, at 19 Washington Avenue. The applicant is proposing to build a new garage with an apartment above, which will access off the alley. And Michelle, can you share the? And I'll show just a couple of pictures, and then I'll stop. So the property is located down by City Beach, down in this area. Again, 19 Washington Avenue is built with a single-family residence detached carport with storage building that will be removed for the new garage. It's surrounded by residential WR2 zoning, just like the property itself, and it has an urban land use designation. The property is served by all public services and facilities. Here's the site plan for the project. We did notice adjacent landowners placed a sign on the property and placed a legal in the paper, and we did not receive any comments. We review conditional use permits according to the criteria in the zoning regulations. The project does comply with the growth policy designation of urban. It can meet all of the zoning regulations for an accessory apartment. The site is suitable for the proposed garage and accessory apartment. They will be required to provide two spaces for the single-family home and one for the apartment, and there's adequate space for that. At the time I was out there, it was winter, and so it was unclear whether the driveway was paved, but we will make a recommendation that that be a condition of approval. Water and sewer are available for the project, and the project does access off of Washington Avenue, which is a paved public street. It shouldn't impact the community. There are a number of these in this neighborhood, and it is compatible with this particular neighborhood as well. The planning board held a public hearing on March 18, and they did unanimously recommend approval. The applicant's representative did speak at that item, and the documents were attached to your packet. It's just the standard conditions of approval, including parking, that the driveway needs to be paved, the standard deed restriction, that the owner can only rent out the apartment if they maintain permanent residency in a primary structure, and no short-term rental. That is all I have. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thanks, Wendy. Any questions for Wendy from the council? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing, and we'll hold that public hearing now on item 7A of the agenda. Michelle, anyone wishing to provide public testimony this evening?
So now is the time to raise your hand, hover over your name, right-click, click the hand icon, star three on your phone, or the three buttons to the left of the X. We'll give you just a minute here to be able to unmute, or to raise your hand. It looks like we don't have anybody who wants to speak towards this, John.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item 7A of the agenda, and I'll turn it back to council for a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we approve W C U P 21-04. The finding is a fact, and the staff report and the conditions of approval is recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board on March 18, 2021.
I'll second.
And it's seconded by Andy. The motion was made by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion, comments? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinnell?
In favor.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
Counselor Hannon is absent, so Counselor Norton?
And Rebecca votes in the affirmative, and the motion does carry unanimously. Thanks, Wendy, but I think we're staying with you and move on to item 7B, if I'm not mistaken, which is a request from Joanna Chung for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment above a new two-car garage located at 243 Dakota Avenue, and the property, again, is zone WR2, and this will be W C U P 21-03.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would recuse myself from this public hearing. I've discussed building this project.
And let the record reflect, the Counselor Davis will recuse himself from the discussion and vote on this item.
All right, well, this one's me. So can everyone see the screen? Thumbs up?
It's up.
Julie? What's up?
We're seeing it.
Okay, perfect. So Joanna Chung is requesting a CUP similar to what Wendy just presented. Her property is at 243 Dakota Avenue, which is on the corner of Dakota and Skiles. It's currently developed with a single-family home, which will remain, and then a garage at the rear of her property. The current garage will be demolished in order to make way for the new two-car garage with a 600-square-foot accessory apartment above. The new garage apartment will be accessed off Skiles, which is how the current garage is accessed, so there won't be any major changes with regard to traffic. The subject lot and all the surrounding lots are zone WR2, or two-family residential, so accessory apartments are allowed as a conditional use. The growth policy designation is urban, which responds to WR2 and has planned densities of 2 to 12 units per acre. In addition, many similar accessory apartments exist and continue to be requested for in the surrounding neighborhood, which is good. Since the structure will have a footprint that's less than 600 square feet, it allows for setbacks of six feet on the sides and rear, and then height and lot coverage requirements are being met as well. There's space for all three required parking spaces on-site, all of which will be confirmed at the time of the building permit. And additionally, the property will be deed restricted, which will ensure the unit can't be rented unless the owner is in the primary residence. And then, of course, in the WR2 zone, short-term rentals are prohibited. So the project was noticed in the pilot, a sign was set up in the yard, and a mailing was sent to adjacent landowners. We didn't receive any public comment at the March Planning Board, and there haven't been any additional public comments since. March Planning Board unanimously voted to recommend approval of W C U P 2103 by council, and that's all I have for you. So I can take questions, and I know Joanna's been here patiently.
And that's all I have for you, so I can take questions and I know Joanna's been here patiently waiting too.
Thanks, Tara. Appreciate the staff report now. Before I ask counsel, any questions for Tara on her staff report before we open the public hearing? Not seeing any. We did advertise for item seven B for a public hearing and I'll first ask the applicant Joanna if she has any additional comments for the council and welcome tonight.
And thank you so much. I don't have any comments, but just thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Joanna. Michelle, any public testimony this evening?
Um, we'll just give everybody a chance to raise their hand at this time by using the three or four options that mentioned before, so I'll just give you a few minutes. John, it looks like um nobody would like to speak towards this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item seven B. And is there a motion from the council?
Uh, I'll make a motion um to approve WCUP twenty one dash oh three. Um, a condition to use permit to construct an accessory apartment above a new two car garage at two forty three Dakota Avenue.
Thanks, Steve. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? And Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinnell.
In favor.
Counselor Sweeney.
In favor.
Counselor Davis.
Are we accused?
Oh, sorry, thanks. Counselor Fury.
In favor.
And Counselor Norton.
Rebecca votes in the affirmative and the motion does carry with Counselor Davis abstaining for the record. Thanks very much. We'll move on to communications from Michelle, our city clerk regarding resolution twenty one dash eleven, if I'm not mistaken, a resolution adopting policies and procedures for the city's cemetery. Michelle?
Thank you. So the city council adopted the um Whitefish Cemetery through resolution number forty eight in nineteen seventeen. And community funds were raised and the cemetery site was purchased with the Whitefish Land Company for six hundred and seventy five dollars. The cemetery was annexed to the city in nineteen seventy nine by ordinance number A three three three. The cemetery was platted into seven sections, A through G, and developed by sections, providing for approximately twenty seven hundred burial lots. In June two thousand and twenty three, the city installed the columbarium niche wall, which provides forty niches, up to two urns per niche for cremated remains. The city clerk's office manages the ownership and interment records for the cemetery and contracts with Whitefish Lake Golf Course to maintain the grounds. To provide consistency between the city and grounds crew, regulations are necessary to operate and maintain a new cemetery that is beautiful, dignified, and appropriate and an appropriate final resting place. Policies and procedures will allow staff to maintain integrity and beauty of the cemetery and provide an attractive and sacred cemetery while allowing for the expression of respect, grief, and loss for those that are interred therein. All lot purchasers in persons using the cemetery shall comply with these regulations. There is no additional cost to the city. I just kind of wanted to kind of go through some of the um policies. It's kind of self explanatory. Um, you could see a lot of these policies throughout other cemeteries. Um, an unwritten policy that we had in the past with the city clerk's office was if you purchased the property or purchased a lot, you had the option to sell to a private entity or sell back to the city. We have changed that to where um there's no third third party sales. So if you sell your property, you need to sell it back to us for the amount that we purchased, but that we sold it to you for. This helps us maintain the records um and make sure that there's no other interment in those grounds as we have had that in the past. Um, we had a third party sale and found out that there was actually somebody who had been interred in that location and so we had to purchase that lot back for the amount that that person purchased it for, which was more than what we sold it for. Um, we want to make sure that if there's any trees or if anybody wants to um plant any trees, that they go through city staff, which would also include our arborist, to make sure that um anything that's in there is going to be able to um not affect anything around it. Um, we've put some guidelines on um flowers and decorations. You know, if for Memorial Day, we always get the question on when um they can be placed and when they should be picked up, so we want to make sure people can clean up their their grounds. Um, so seven days after Memorial Day, um, we would like the flowers to be picked up, so they're not flying around. Um, and then the size of memorial or monument, um, the width of the single lot memorial may not exceed fifty inches with a six inch mowing strip and the depth, which is um from the foot uh or the head, uh twenty cannot extend or exceed twenty four inches, including the six inch mowing strip. And because of the grounds and some people coming in there and placing their memorials without us knowing, there's not always the space available for a full ten foot for um a memorial. So when there's a a double uh monument, they need to contact us to make sure that um we can give them the appropriate uh measurements for that. And no memorial may be placed without prior approval of the city clerk or the groundskeeper in confirmation of that exact plot location. All memorials must be set by a monument company approved by the city. Um, cleaning and repair, maintenance and cleaning of a memorial monument is the responsibility of the lot owner, not the responsibility of the city of Whitefish. Uh, for interment, uh, city workers, we need two working days' notice um prior to um opening and closing of a grave. Grave openings um and closing may only be done by city employees. That was also an underlying policy that in the past, if there was any cremains, um, family could just go in and turn them and that's not the case. We do have a uh irrigation system out there that we don't want to mess with. Um, and in a full size lot, burials, you can have one casket burial with, which was, is the deepest and four internments placed on top of that or just for cremation um remains. So that means that if some, if a full burial needs to be placed and there's already cremains in there, um, disinterment of cremated remains is prohibited in place prior to the full burial. And then we do have that columbarium niche and so there are up to two in urns, internments that can be placed in there. And then scattering cremated remains, the scattering of cremated remains is not allowed on cemetery grounds. You have any questions? I can answer any questions that you may have. It's not a very fun subject, but I'm here to answer anything that you may have.
But an important one. Thanks very much, Michelle, for bringing this forward for the council to consider any questions for Michelle. Not seeing any. We will need a motion on what will be resolution twenty one dash eleven. Is there a motion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt resolution twenty one eleven, a resolution in the city council of the city of Whitefish, Montana, adopting the Whitefish city cemetery policy and procedures.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
I think that was Steve, seconded by Counselor Quinnell. Further discussions? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinnell.
In favor.
Counselor Sweeney.
In favor.
Counselor Davis.
In favor.
Counselor Fury.
In favor.
And Counselor Norton.
And she votes in the affirmative and asked me to translate to you. Very well written guidelines, very clear, and thank you very much. So thanks again, Michelle.
Hmm, thank you.
We'll move on to communications from our city manager Dana Smith. And you have Dana's report enclosed with with your packet. Uh, Dana, or council, any questions first of all for Dana on the content of the manager's report this evening? Not seeing any, Dana. Anything additional to report on tonight?
Steve, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, there, it seemed like there was some confusion over Senate Bill three ninety eight and House Bill one thirty seven. One of them was tabled, the tobacco products one, one of them was been tabled and one of them is still active.
Yes, so one thirty seven is tabled. That one uh was one that we were most concerned about. Three ninety eights come forward and they were able to introduce it because there's a uh a license fee, I think. Um, that one is still on, uh, let's see, I just got the update. Um, it passed committee, so that one is still in progress, so that's kind of the next bill that we're looking at. I talked to um Cheryl from Missoula and we're, we've decided to hold off on the uh tobacco ordinance until uh probably May, once all of these bills have cleared out. Um, I know they're working really hard on that one as well. Um, there are some other updates um to just the legislative session, but Steve, did that answer your question?
It did. Uh, and then I also, if you're going to go through an update on the legislative session, I'll just wait.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking I'd run through. You know, there, there wasn't very many changes um from when I had done this report. Um, House Bill one twenty one is in the process of being signed, so that one is making its way through. That really, really doesn't impact us right at this moment, but more so once we add a person to the local health board. Um, it's been toned down a lot from when it was first introduced. Um, the House Bill two fifty nine, as you know, that is um enrolled printed version, version is available, so next stop our signatures on that one. Um, I'm going to come back to that one because I'd like to have a little bit more of discussion about that if we could. Um, House Bill five sixty two uh passed the House um and um is at committee and that had its hearing in uh end of March. Um, House Bill six thirty two, um, there is a hearing on April seventh with the Senate Finance and Claims Committee. That has to do with the stimulus funds that are coming from the federal government to the state. Now, at first, um, I was concerned that they were reducing our portion that was identified in the American Rescue Plan. I read through the bill and through um the American Rescue Plan and it does not appear that they're taking twenty percent from the allocation to the city. It's, they're taking money that's given to the state and the state gets to invest that into infrastructure. Um, so I still feel that twenty percent is just an arbitrary figure that they're trying to run through there. That's one that we'll uh start tracking now to see how the grant process works. Um, House Bill uh three ninety three, which would provide for remote meetings, was actually tabled in committee, so I don't know what that means from a standpoint that we're operating remote right now. Um, so, so I think maybe the intent is to not allow that in perpetuity. And um, let's see here, House Bill three ninety seven, uh, which is accessory dwelling units, if you haven't seen the news already, that was tabled and the motion on April first uh failed to take, the motion failed the committee to take it to uh the House or to the Senate for a uh second reading on April sixth. So that was tabled on the ABUs, which is really important for us as we look toward, at least working towards some over our affordable housing goals. And so I think that's, that's kind of legislative update there. Um, going back to House Bill two fifty nine, um, I think we have a couple of options there. One is uh, obviously, right now, if we don't do anything, I mean, I, to be honest, I really think the governor will sign it regardless of us sending a letter, but the League of Cities and Towns uh did say that they would be willing to write a le- letter in conjunction with the city of Whitefish, possibly Bozeman and Missoula, asking the governor to veto uh the bill. Um, you know, rumor on the street is that he um likes this bill because he had a project that um maybe had some issues in Bozeman or something or or knew the people, I'm not quite sure, but he had an interest in this bill, so if the council is interested, I could work with Kelly at the League of Cities and Towns and have a drafted letter to at least request a veto for this bill, since we've gone through every other step, you know, giving our comments, but this would be kind of the last ditch effort uh to have it not go into law.
I think it's absolutely a good use of our time, Dana. If you need any help with that, um, by dial means would, you know, help out if you need it, so I, I would certainly encourage us to sign on to a letter with the league.
Yep, so unless I hear otherwise, I think we'll just plan to move forward since the direction along has been to provide comments on that bill. Um, I do think in the future, not yet, but as we wait for that bill to be signed into law, we probably need to consider scheduling a joint meeting of some type with the Housing Steering Committee and the council. Our work sessions are really booked right now, so you know, at some point, I think we really need to talk about what direction do we want to go to, what direction do we want to go should this, uh, should our, our legacy homes program uh be affected? Um, and it should probably just say when it will be affected. So just kind of keep, keep that in mind. We'll probably have to do a special meeting if we're going to hold a, a, a meeting like that, but I think it's probably the best way to make sure that all the concerns of the council and the committee members are all addressed at some point together. Um, and how we move forward. Let's see, other items I have, um, Michelle, could I share my screen real quickly? Um, COVID nineteen, I thought I'd just share some quick statistics for everybody so that you can kind of see where we're at. Um, Health Officer Joe Russell, he provided me with some data in the COVID task force with some data and graphs um that I thought you might find interesting. So over time, our cases have consistently uh been going down. This goes all the way through the end of March. Um, this is the good news. You see January's cases, we have an average of forty seven point six. Um, February went down to thirty three point six and March is down to eleven point nine. New cases per week or per, per day, no, per week. Um, the positive rates, this is the one, you know, when you look at positivity rates, because we also talk a lot about positivity rates. We are finally in March under that five percent positivity rate that you see. Um, you know, talked about quite a bit nationwide as a benchmark, so hopefully that stays the same. I talked to Superintendent Means today. I asked if the school has seen any uptick with um the holiday uh spring break and um, sounds like they haven't seen a big spike yet, so if they will see one, so that's really good news. And then vaccinations administered um right now, this and this was uh for the week that he had presented it as a three twenty six, so that's gone, this has gone up quite a bit. Um, but we have over twelve thousand people fully immunized and um almost twenty thousand with at least dose one, and that was as of March twenty sixth, so I'm sure those have increased quite a bit. The county is doing, I want to say about a thousand a day, close to, and so that's, and they do it, I think, three days a week. Um, Whitefish is still doing their clinics, they're doing around four hundred, sometimes six hundred, depending on how the numbers have worked out. Um, so we're making really good progress on that, so I'd share that with you. And then, um, I know I have a lot, I'm sorry. Um, I met with the Snow Lot, um, Snow, well, it's a committee of the, it's the housing authority. They have a few of their board members. Um, and I'm part of the committee for the construction kind of prog- project for the Snow Lot. And we met on Friday um with uh David from Montana Construction Management. He will come to a council meeting and introduce himself. He's their owner's rep who's going to help him through the process, process, but just so you know, their, the next step really is looking at an architect to help have um designs um and drawings, working through the planning department on P U D or whatever type of uh steps are needed to make that project viable. Um, when it comes to budget, we know that building costs right now are really high, but we will start uh to look closer at the budget, knowing that uh breaking ground won't happen for some time, so. but we will start to look closer at the budget, knowing that breaking ground won't happen for some time still. And then finally, good news. We were able to, through interest-based bargaining with our fire union, IFF, we were able to reach a tentative agreement last Thursday after two full days of negotiating. Really, we had another session of two days, so about four days, but we've come to a tentative agreement, and so that is great news. They'll be taking it back to their membership to see if that's approved. We were able to, you know, address our unfunded liabilities. We have the wage cap moving forward for fiscal year '23 and '24 at 3.5%, so that that will be citywide now implemented. And for this next year, they do have a schedule change that we're working on with them, and so we were able to address the, their wage concerns by giving them an additional half a percent over the 3.5%, but that actually is a zero-cost increase to the city. In fact, it's a savings to the city, just due to how their hours are operating in the unscheduled. We will not have scheduled overtime anymore. So, that was all really great news for us. So, I will be quiet. I know it's been a long night, so if you guys have any questions, though, please let me know.
Thanks Dana. Any questions for Dana on all of the above? Not seeing any from council, so we'll move on to the last two items of our agenda. We do have two letters, well, one letter and one letter with the petition. We'll start with the letter from North Valley Food Bank, and I want to thank Sophie for sticking on the call tonight. It's been a long evening, I know. I'll probably turn this back over to Dana, but, you know, essentially, North Valley is requesting the city or asking that we partner in the reconstruction or expansion of the food bank, and I just want to give credit to her credits, too. You guys have done a fantastic job this past year, and it just amazes me that just a number of years ago, we did the big expansion project or built the new facility, and here we are looking at a new expansion project. So, that speaks volumes to the work you're doing to help those in need throughout, not only Flathead County, but Lincoln County and elsewhere as well. So, thank you very much for all the work you do, and please convey that onto the board. And Dana, there's been a formal request made here. Do you have a recommendation for the council if food is certainly our desire to help, you know, offset perhaps some of the city costs associated with the permitting?
Yeah, so, as you know, we do not waive impact fees or building permit fees, but what we can do as a city, and we have done it in the past at times, is contribute through other funding sources to cover those costs. One of, you know, one of the thoughts with the food bank and the demand that they have, you know, the American Rescue Plan, we're not quite sure yet on what uses we can have, and what the uses are. There's some very specific ones, but we think there's some ways that you could identify this as a COVID response. That said, we have to be cautious when we're providing these impact fee reimbursements, because it can set precedence for other projects. But the council does have it in their discretion to fund it with other funding sources, if you believe the need is there. In the past, I believe we did deny the school for their elementary projects, when they came forward and requested it, but, you know, that might be a different situation than the one based now. We do have general fund dollars, you know, we're sitting with, we have open reserves to where, you know, and I'm not sure exactly what the total dollar amount is being requested. I wrote down 5,229 roughly. That amount we would have, I think, available in reserves in the general fund, should you decide to do it now.
And that would be, that would be for the impact fees only, Dana, not the building permit fees?
Um, Sophie, can you, do you know if that includes your building permit fees? I don't actually know that for sure.
Includes the building permit fees, yes.
Okay, so it's the whole package. I don't know if the council has any thoughts on this, but undoubtedly, the expansion of the food bank and the food that they provided, you know, the past 18 months is certainly, in part, related to the pandemic that we face and that people are having tough times right now. So, I personally don't want to set precedent by extending an olive branch to the food bank, but in this particular case, I certainly can support and justify the reimbursement of impact fees and building fees for this particular project. But I would be interested in the councilor's thoughts on this as well. And I'll go ahead and just start with Counselor Quinell, just in an effort to move this forward.
All right, thanks, John. I've spent a fair amount of time volunteering over there, and I tell you, they do a great job.
Nice.
And there's big need, and people that come in, they're super grateful, and anything we can do to help support Food Bank as a city is what we should be doing. So, however we have to get that money to them, and however we make it happen, we just need to make it happen.
Thank you, Steve. Counselor Fury.
Um, I agree with Counselor Quinell. I think that the impact fee and building permit fee, if we have the funds available, we should by all means offset those.
Thank you, Eddie. Counselor Sweeney.
I concur with Counselor Quinell and Counselor Fury.
Thanks, Eddie. And Counselor Davis.
I concur with all of my fellow counselors.
And I believe Rebecca does as well. She just sent me a message saying she would be in favor of building permit and impact fee reimbursement. And just so we have something for the record, if I could just ask for a simple motion, that would be great for the minutes.
I move that we donate to the food bank, the amount, what did you say Dana, $5,266, is that?
I said $5,229, is that correct, Sophie?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Okay, the amount, $5,229.
Thanks, Steve. I'll just qualify that motion as a reimbursement of those fees. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Yeah, I believe, Andy, you got that first, so Andy is seconding the motion. Further discussion from the council? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell?
In favor.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton.
And she votes in the affirmative.
Thank you.
The motion does carry unanimously. Thanks very much, Sophie.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Good luck with the project. And last but not least, we do have the letter and the pending petition from, well, it was presented by the neighbors over in the Whitefish City Beach area, but delivered on behalf of those individuals by Neil. Stuber and Neil commented at the beginning of the meeting. I had an opportunity to talk with Neil. He was actually dropping information, you know, door-to-door, and, you know, came up to my front door. I don't think he realized I lived there, but we had a quick chat outside, and, you know, having lived in that neighborhood for about 10 years, I certainly can appreciate the concerns of the neighbors on Dakota Avenue in particular. It is used, and Andy can probably speak to this as well, as kind of a bypass to avoid, you know, ingress and egress onto Wisconsin for people that live down the east side of Dakota. And, you know, they come down Dakota at high speeds to get onto East Edgewood to get to the light to come over the viaduct. It's the quickest way out of the neighborhood, undoubtedly, especially with the increasing traffic we've been observing, and I know there's a lot of families with, you know, kids on Dakota as well. I'm personally not a big fan of speed bumps. I imagine Craig will touch on that tonight, and Chief Diles expressed concerns with, you know, speed bumps as a traffic calming measure as well. But I would be interested in evaluating whether or not making some of those four-way or those intersections, you know, four-way stops, similar to what we did on Summers Avenue in Kalispel a number of years ago, when those streets were redesigned and built. So, with that said, I'll certainly turn it over to Craig, considering this is more of a Public Works question than anything, and then I can open it up for counselor comments.
Sure, yeah, we've received concerns from residents in this neighborhood for quite some time. We've done, taken some action to try and control speed. I know the police department has increased their presence during the busy summer months in the City Beach neighborhood. We have moved our speed radar signs around throughout the area over the course of the summer, and I know those signs do have the capability to log speed and download speeds based on time of day. I don't know that we have the results of that, or I don't have them in front of me. I know Bridgers spent quite a bit of time working with those signs on their location and downloading the data, so we can definitely research that, and I know the police department's used that data to kind of target their enforcement in that area. Yeah, speed bumps are an issue that we wrangle with quite a bit. We get requests for them almost constantly, not only in areas that are, you know, plagued by, you know, potential speeding, but areas where we have significant construction and different types of traffic. People like to see speed bumps. We put them in occasionally on detours, on routes where we're moving traffic around a project, but we don't like the use of permanent speed bumps, because studies have shown time and time again that they really tend to exacerbate the problem. Vehicles will slow down for a speed bump, go over the bump, and then accelerate more rapidly, and it actually oftentimes winds up, you know, creating more of an issue as you have that acceleration after a speed bump and that quick deceleration before a speed bump. Stop signs also tend to have a, you know, a similar type of effect. We do consider four-way stops at intersections where we have other types of obstructions, whether they be visible, visibility issues in a, in a triangle, or, you know, trees that are, that are out in the right-of-way or landscaping that can't be removed, things like that. You know, the vision triangle is something that we look at every time we evaluate an intersection for four-way stops, and so I think that's something we can get together, you know, PD and Public Works can evaluate all those intersections again and look at that. But, you know, at this point, we've, you know, we've done quite a bit of study out there, and I think what we need to do really is look at that data and kind of get back together and go back to the drawing board on this area. It's pretty clear that there's a growing concern about traffic in the area, and we need to consider some changes.
Craig, would it be possible, I know we addressed this briefly when the Skiles apartment project was approved about a year ago, but, you know, we know that there are no sidewalk improvements on Minnesota Avenue as well as Iowa. And with Sir Optimus Park being on Minnesota, I think some of these neighbors' concerns are the lack of separation between the vehicle and the pedestrian. And I know it's something that we can't, you know, fix overnight, but I think a component of evaluating the pedestrian safety and speeds in that general neighborhood, so I'm assuming, including Dakota, Minnesota, and Iowa, would be also considering the lack of sidewalks and what we can do to improve pedestrian and child safety as they're kind of navigating those streets on their bikes, walking, you know, playing wiffle ball and trying to walk to the park, because it's definitely an issue that I observe, driving back and forth from work every day as well, personally.
Yeah, you know, the only real fund that we have for constructing new sidewalks is, is the cash and loo fund.
Yeah.
I'll have to look and see what our current cash is, the available cash is in that district. That's the north district. But given the amount of development we've seen north of the viaduct, I'm guessing that's one of our more lucrative funds, and so we can definitely consider, you know, some sidewalk improvement projects in that area, especially in and around Sir Optimus Park.
Okay, great, yeah, if you could envelop that into your reevaluation of this area, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thanks for your comments tonight, Craig. Did staff have anything additional to add to this item before I ask for counselor comments? Not seeing any, or Dana, did you have something to add?
No, I was gonna see if Chief Dile wanted to add anything, but it's fine. We've talked about it. We've seen that the data where the signs were up didn't show anything significant, but I don't know that that was actually on Dakota. So, I think we've talked about, you know, getting Dakota in that rotation for the specific area where they were concerned. But I think, you know, from the standpoint from staff, we'll sit down and talk about where we go from here.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks very much. Any comments from the council on this? You can just show hands, and I'll acknowledge you. Steve?
I just have a question about pedestrian crosswalks in that area. Are there any currently there? Because that could be one measure that might help some, especially near the park.
You know, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but you're right, Steve. That's one of the more kind of readily accessible tools that we have is pavement marking, especially around the area of a park, so I think that's one of the solutions that we can employ, you know, for this situation.
Thanks, Steve. Counselor Sweeney.
Yeah, I'd like us to come up with a recommended solution to deal with this problem. We have it in several places, and I, Craig, this is not taking shots at you or the department or anything else, but, I mean, I really would like us to find a solution set here that we can live with. You know, I think about whether it's just, even if it's temporary, speed bumps that are there during the non-winter season, you know, to begin to slow people down, if that's what's required. I mean, I, I think we need to relook at some of these things we've tended to dismiss. We just, I hate just walking away from it and saying, "We've looked at it, and we can't do anything." We just, for lack of a better description, I'd like to change a losing game, so let's come up with something.
Thanks, Frank. Further comments from the council? And if I were to read between the lines based on the comments that were submitted, and I think Rebecca commented to me just now to the same effect, that, you know, in addition to the Sir Optimus concerns we just brought forward with the lack of sidewalks in Iowa and Minnesota, would be the three primary intersections on Dakota, which would be Dakota and Woodland, Craig, Dakota and Waverly, and finally, I believe Dakota and Skiles Avenue. And I believe Dakota and Skiles is actually already a four-way stop. It would be the other two, Waverly and the Woodland intersections. All right, well, we're gonna go ahead and move on to mayor and counselor comments, and I'll go ahead and start with Counselor Quinell. Anything to wrap up with tonight?
No, nothing. Well, I've got my second COVID shot today, so I'm fully vaccinated. That's, that's good news, and my daughter gets vaccinated tomorrow, so it's out there. It's all done.
Counselor Fury.
Uh, just one quick thing. This is probably for Dave Taylor, because I know I had a call from an individual asking about the state of repair of the publicly open and privately maintained path along Murdoch Lane through Iron Horse. And I know Maria's nodding her head, because I know this gentleman had actually talked to her about it, and it's not one of the city's paths. But if I recall, and this gentleman recalled the same thing, that when the original Iron Horse was approved, they were required to build that path and maintain it, and it has fallen into, fallen into a rather disheveled state of repair. So, I think, first of all, Dave, you need, if you can't, just check back through the records and see if that is the case, and if that is in fact the case, then we should send a letter to the homeowners and say, "Hey, folks, you're required to keep this path maintained." So, other than that, I get my second shot on Thursday. So, then I'll have two weeks before I can really start hanging out with people, but that'll be great. It's very liberating, and yes, they are out there. It's a pretty cool thing. And I really want to commend the neighbors on Kalispel Avenue. They have taken a very proactive approach to that, and I hope that we get that petition and we can move forward on that as quickly as possible. Mayor stated very clearly before, we have sometimes taken a- Mayor stated very clearly before, we have sometimes taken a little bit of heat for not doing that, even though it's something that was identified a long time ago. But he's exactly right, unless the neighbors come to us with a petition that says, hey, we're all in favor of this, or at least 75% of us, then we can't do anything. So thank you, Kalispel residents.
Thank you, Andy. Counselor Sweeney?
The only thing I have is to reiterate what Andy just said about Kalispel Avenue. And I can't thank the neighbors and the residents of that area enough for coming forward with and taking the initiative. And I hope we as a city can do whatever we can do to, for lack of a better word, facilitate their initiative. So I hope that's something we take into consideration here.
Thanks, Frank. Counselor Davis?
I agree with that comment, but I have no, nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ben. I do have a comment from Rebecca that she wanted me to share. She apologizes for being technologically challenged tonight, but she's here listening and participating in the public process and appreciates what everyone's doing and what we need to do to stay safe with COVID precautions. Continuing with masking, safe distancing and get vaccinated as soon as you can. She has listened to the most recent COVID task force, task force meeting and was hopeful that we are making good progress. Stay safe and be kind. With that said, I also got my first shot and I get my second shot in about a week and a half. And it is liberating to say the least. So with that said, I had nothing additional to add. Dana, anything further from staff?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, thanks to Michelle again for the glitches we had tonight early on with the work session. Thanks for working through those Dana and Michelle and for navigating the, the remote meetings. Hopefully we'll be back to normal soon. And on that note, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.